I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, please join me in a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. We have a moment for some, any acknowledgements? Any council members have acknowledgements they'd like to share?
I don't know if it's an acknowledgement, but I, I noticed that the Triple Crown is in town. And I saw the softball fields just packed with softball players, which was great today. And I guess they're here all week, so it's been fun to see them come from, I think they said, I heard from five different states, but I think they're from all over, all over the world, or all over the country, so it's exciting.
As far away as Hawaii.
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool.
It's exciting.
Any others?
I'm not sure if mine's an acknowledgement or apology for missing the work session. So, a couple of years ago at work, we, we brought together a bunch of partners and raised over $20 million to purchase 8,000 acres of space, open space to preserve. And we were out, couldn't have been in a further corner when I had a breakdown, so. I was a couple hours from cell coverage and I'm shocked I'm even here, but my apologies for missing the work session, but I'm happy to be here today.
Chair.
Yes?
So, I have an announcement, I have an announcement.
Sure.
Just a short one. I went to watch a movie last night, Sound of Freedom. It's about human trafficking. So I don't know how many people have seen this movie or not, but it was, it was very, very, very inspirational. I would, there's a pledge at the end of the movie to spread the word for people to go watch it. Thank you.
It's wonderful, yeah.
And I would just say, if you hadn't driven by the Marshall White Center, it's coming down, or maybe it's already down. And groundbreaking on Tuesday, July 18th, so a week from today at 9:00 AM.
So exciting. I was watching that video. It's very exciting. I mean, it's bittersweet watching the building getting torn down. But we know it's because there's something really great coming too. And the only other thing I want to mention is I know it's Disability Pride Month, so I like to make sure to acknowledge that that's happening this month and people can celebrate. Okay, so now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. At the special meeting of September 13th, 2022, joint work session of September 21st, 2022, and the regular meeting of October 4th, 2022, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, Chair, the meetings are correct.
And joint work session of September 13th, 22, and joint work session of October 4th, 2022, Councilmember Hayer.
Yes, Chair, I have reviewed those and found them to be accurate in my recollection.
And the regular meeting of November 15th, 2022, Councilmember Blair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I have reviewed those and found them to be accurate.
And the regular meeting of October 18th, 2022, Councilmember Nadolski.
Thank you, Chair. I've reviewed them and they're accurate.
And last but not least, joint work session of November 29th, 2022, Councilmember White.
Yes, Chair, I found those to be accurate and I'm glad I got to read them because I didn't remember what I had for lunch. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember White and a second by Councilmember Hayer to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you so much for reading all of that. Now, we are so, so excited to be having a recognition this evening of John E. Lindquist. The council is awarding him our Compass Award. Up next, we're going to have Councilmember Nadolski talk to you all about what that award is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if you have not heard of the Compass Award, it is a very prestigious recognition that's only bestowed upon individuals, groups, or organizations that have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to our community. An unwavering commitment to bettering our community over an extended period of time. So not just a flash of the pan, but someone who's here for the long haul. And it celebrates those who exemplify volunteerism, civic pride, and a strong dedication to making Ogden City an even better place to live. So like a key to the city, this esteemed accolade is not frequently presented, as it is reserved for those whose collective contributions have significantly impacted the city. Recipients display exceptional leadership, selfless service, and a steadfast commitment to enhancing our community. This award stands as a testament to the remarkable individuals, groups, and organizations that shape our community. Their selflessness and commitment inspire us all to become better citizens and to actively contribute to the betterment of our city.
Awesome. Oh, so sorry. Next up, are we going to read those first or are we going to go to the?
Can I just, can I say something real fast?
Yeah, please.
As we know, we're presenting it to Johnny Lindquist based around the Pops concert. And I just thought it would be great to all hear some, some memories and some traditions from our community. So we've all got some different memories or traditions that, that we've gathered from, from, throughout the community that talk about the Pops concert, and we've all got, we've all got some we'd like to share, real fast.
First is Vice Chair Ritchie.
Yep, so I, I have a memory that was submitted by Scott Bright, who mentions how his family hasn't missed a fireworks session in over 20 years. It's a great family tradition, sitting on the grass and watching the fireworks. And they, they, you know, obviously appreciate that. And that's the same, same memories I have. We've, we'll, we'll gather together with our family and we usually try and time it to where we can jump in the car and speed off down the road before the traffic gets too bad, but other than that, it's, it's, yeah, it's phenomenal.
Then we have Councilmember Nadolski.
So I've got the response from Jessica Tilly. She says, "We lived on Harrison Boulevard across from Weber State Campus when I was in fourth to eighth grade, in the late 80s and early 90s. So we would walk over fairly early in the day, usually take some sandwiches, a blanket, and often friends. One friend brought her new Game Boy one year and we took turns playing it while waiting for the music and fireworks to start. Living across the street was a total bonus because we could easily walk back home once the night concluded. In middle school, before it even got dark, you would walk around the pond trying to spot people you knew and maybe hadn't seen since school had ended. Some of my best summer memories are from those evenings."
And Councilmember Blair.
Thank you. Mine came from Ryan Welling. And this was a response from the WSU. We posted this on WSU's site and, and people were able to respond that way. He said years ago, he was working at the Flying J on the corner of Harrison and Country Hills. And as, as he was leaving the office one night, he heard banging. And he turned to see if someone was knocking on the door, maybe they had been locked in, and there was no one there. When he turned back around, he realized those were the cannons going off. And then the fireworks started immediately after that. He said that was the first time he even knew about those fireworks. That was the first time he'd ever experienced them. But he said he always looks forward to them now and he tries not to miss them. And he's tried not to miss them ever since, so I think it's neat.
And Councilmember White.
Yes, this is a response from Kimberly Halen. Sorry if I mispronounced that. She says, "I grew up going to the fireworks. We would meet up at my grandma's and listen to the concert and watch the fireworks. After I got married and had my own kids, we would meet up with family and friends. We would play games while we waited for the fireworks. I have since moved across the country and still miss seeing the fireworks show."
And Councilmember Lopez.
Excuse me. This is a response from Diane East. "I work for Ligoris Pizza and we have a tradition where we invite our employees and their families and some of our customers and friends to meet and have a meal before the fireworks. We then gather outside and watch the great fireworks. We look forward to this tradition each year. It was hard for us when we didn't have them because of COVID. We are glad that they are available to us again. It is great to get together and enjoy the great fireworks and being with friends and family."
And Councilmember Hayer.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is a form response from First Name David, no last name. "Going every year since I was born, I am now 19, and seeing the orchestra playing the 1812 Overture with the cannons makes the moments before the fireworks worth going to."
Love that. I'm up next. This is a response from Megan Delalucia Warren. "I've gone to the Pops concert and fireworks at Weber State since I can remember at 26 years old. I will never forget how excited I always got, gathering up our blankets and heading up to the hill of 40th Street with my mom to find a spot to wait for the show to begin. She always brought Twizzlers, nibs, and popcorn to snack on. We would play games until the first boom of the cannon went off, and then we'd stop everything and turn all eyes to the fireworks. Over the years, we've watched from many locations, including the upper floor windows at McAdie Hospital while my grandpa was an inpatient there. No matter what was going on in life, the fireworks always seemed to be something we made it to. I am missing the show for the first time this year, minus the years it was not held during the COVID-19 pandemic. As I am working out of state, I cherish these memories so much and hope to someday share the tradition with my own family. And for myself, I have to say, I've lived here about 18 years now, and that was one of my first experiences of Ogden, was seeing all of those blankets laying out all over Weber State's grounds. And then I was shocked, because I come from really big cities, that the next day, the blankets were still there. Everybody's blanket was still in the same spot, including ours for our family. We went that first year. And I just really love that. I think it's really, says something about Ogden and our area. So we thank you so much for that." Next up, we'll have the awards.
Yes, it's my honor to read the Compass Award. And it states, "An esteemed member of the Ogden community, John E. Lindquist proudly upholds the legacy of his family through the remarkable Lindquist Family Symphony Pops and Fireworks Show. Now in its 44th year, which I find remarkable, this hallmark event held at Weber State University has become an integral part of Ogden's cultural fabric, captivating thousands of people each year while fostering a strong sense of community spirit. It stands as one of the largest fireworks displays in Utah and remains among the most highly anticipated events in Ogden each year. John is the, Johnny is the president of Lindquist Mortuaries and Great Western Insurance. His contribution to the, and to the extensive remodel of the Social Science Building at Weber State University, now named in his honor, is a testament to his dedication and influence. His exceptional work ethic, unwavering commitment, and remarkable talents have left a profound and lasting impact on our community." And I would just like to present this, and then we've got a couple other Compass Award gifts for you, and I'd like you to come up.
You want a picture of me too? No, no.
Yeah, we're gonna do a picture of you also. Yeah, wanna do that now?
I prepared about 20 or 30 minutes of a response.
I'll wait for the time. Yeah, go ahead.
First, thank you very much. It's very humbling. I appreciate you recognizing de facto what we've done as a family. We try to do the right things. I too have attended all 44 concerts and fireworks. We, this was started by my parents and my Aunt Jean, my Aunt Jean Lindquist Pell, who is the executive director of the Ogden Symphony. And they wanted to create something to get the kids involved with music, art. And they decided if they didn't have fireworks or something else, my, the cannons was my dad's idea. Anything would be funny. Of course, it was one of the highlights, watching the ducks get shot. But it was all, just to try to make Ogden that much better. We picked Weber State, not because they could handle the crowd the first few years, because there were only a couple hundred of us. Now scrolling through, I believe their last number was 70,000, the largest event in Weber County, one-time event per year. But I'd like to read something that I've tried to do all my life, all my adult life. I read this about 30 or 40 years ago. I was then about 50. This is from Mother Teresa. "If you do good, people may accuse you of being selfish motives. Do good anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may hurt, you may get hurt, but give the world the best anyway." And that's kind of been my philosophy in trying to make Ogden, Weber County, a better place to live. I appreciate this very much. It's very humbling. It will sit someplace very nice, I promise you, as the horse. And thank you for giving me a horse that doesn't need to be fed. Or, well, your apologies, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any, any comments from the mayor or any of the council members?
I'll take that executive privilege and just jump in and say, Johnny, thank you for everything that you've done. You're an example to all of us in terms of community contribution and commitment to the people around you. We both have Chloe's, we both have a number of other things. You and I get to talk a little bit of smack, back and forth sometimes. I've always appreciated your leadership and your example and what you've done for our community. And this is well-deserved, and there will be more to come, but thank you for everything that you've done and for the example you've set in terms of leadership and sacrifice for your community. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
Chair, I'd love to add a little something. I, I've been, I can't say I've been to all 44, but that was about the year I got married. And, and my wife and I used that Pops concert as something to do. And as our family has grown, so has our blanket little area. And we really enjoyed that. One year I didn't go to it. I, I got in a plane and we flew over it. It's not nearly as good. It's better, it's better at Weber State, but thank you so much for all you do. It's been my observation, it's my personal observation, that your family is, is very philanthropic. We, the city has really been blessed because of your, your contributions and what you've done for the city, and I thank you so much.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. I think it was really fun to listen to the people that wrote in. And I, and the, the theme that kept coming up was families and community. And when somebody who is able to grow families and community without, I, I, with being very humble about it, is well-deserved, deserving of, you know, awards like this, so thank you very much.
Are you calling Johnny humble?
I, I, it was, I was trying to figure out the word. I know.
All right, I'm just making sure. I'll make notes in my journal.
I was going through my, yeah, my thesaurus is here, but, but I do think that growing family and communities is, is what we do best here. And I appreciate that I get to be part of that as well. So thank you for your leadership there.
Absolutely. Any other comments?
If you don't mind, I'm, I, I think everybody in this room, I think everybody on this dais, everybody up here wishes and wants to find ways to bring our community together, to provide lasting and impactful events for our community. And what you've been able to do for the last 44 years, and I don't want to undermine Weber State, they've been great also in this partnership. But what you, what you've been able to do and what you've been able to provide for our citizens is, is truly remarkable. I, my quote wasn't nearly as, as impactful as yours, but I remember reading a long time ago just a little quote that said, "Bloom where you're planted," and, and, and I think you have done that better than anyone I know. You have always been very true, very loyal to Ogden City, very passionate about Ogden City, and very forward-thinking about how you could always make this community better. And I, I appreciate everything that you do. I, I think I've been to every Pops concert except two when I was on my mission. And I was, it was one of the days I was homesick. I, my family loves it. I love it. I love going with my girls to it now. I'm excited for them to have their own families and we just keep going. So I, I appreciate, like the mayor had said, I appreciate your leadership and I appreciate your example. I don't know, I think I've told this before. When I was younger, I told my parents and my grandparents, who made me work every day, "I don't want to work. I don't want to work." And, and the examples they gave me were the Lindquists. They said, "Look at the Lindquists. They go to work every day and they work hard every day." And I've, I've never forgotten that. And I've, I, it's not just a bow tie that I try to emulate you in. I try to do that a lot. And then, and you're a great role model, but I appreciate everything you do for our community. Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindquist? I think this award tonight is extra special because it's, it's the first award that this council gives out. It's the first, it was created this year, or last year, but created between last year and this year. And it's the first award that is given out. And I also want, because of that, I also want to thank Janine and our staff, because it was actually Janine's idea. I think the name of this award, and, and then the staff probably worked very hard to bring this to fruition. So double special and thank you, Janine, to you and the staff. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, great. Well, thanks again so much. Okay, next up, we have the Common Consent, which has three different items on there. And two of them are for setting public hearings for August 1st for those boundary adjustments, and then some appointments to the Natural Resources and Sustainability Stewardship Committee.
Chair, make the motion that we adopt the common consent items.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember White, a second from Vice Chair Ritchie to adopt the common consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Are any of the committee members here?
Great question. Either Tara, Tara or Stephanie? Not this evening, but thank you so much for your service, wherever you are. Up next, oh, he's on it, Barton Brearley, our Planning Manager from Community Economic Development, to talk with us about proposed zone text amendment.
All right, so fireworks zoning, fireworks zoning, okay. So I get to talk about zoning. So this is a proposal to add a new zoning district to the zoning ordinance, an R2S, small lot, single-family zone. So the origin of this request, this, the council has looked at the piece of property on 3841 Jackson Avenue, which used to be the site of Grandview Elementary School. The school district is in the process of declaring that surplus and putting it out for sale. And the council asked for a planning commission recommendation on whether it should be changed from the current zoning, R3, down to R2. So the recommendation coming to you tonight comes from that. So what the R3 zone allows, it allows multiple family, up to about 20 units, four acres, townhomes, or a duplex complex. And in our estimation, if the site were to remain an R3 zone, most likely you would have a multiple-family development on the property. An R2 zone would no longer allow the multiple family, it would no longer allow townhomes. It would allow a duplex complex at a little bit lower density than the R3 would allow. It would also allow a duplex subdivision or a single-family subdivision. And, and our estimation, it'd probably be unlikely to be a single-family development, because that would require 6,000 square foot lots, for, even for a duplex, it would require a 12,000 square foot lot. So we have R1, R2, and R3, and you'd think that R2 is somewhere, would be kind of midway between R1 and R2, or R3. But in fact, R2's a lot closer to R1 than it is R3. This is just, in, R2, you can do it as a subdivision or group dwelling, and there's some differences in standards and, in what those could be done. So in looking at this need, or in this request, we really talked to the planning commission about, what's the target? What's, what do we need? What does Ogden really need for housing? And looking at the general plan, the goal is housing that is well-maintained, varied in cost, mixed density, is located in stafe, stable, and revitalized neighborhoods throughout Ogden. One objective is to expand homeownership. Another objective is to facilitate residential infill redevelopment and rehabilitation, in some cases at higher densities. And we looked at just what kind of housing do we need? And we hope, when we do the general plan update, that we can get into this more detail. But this is just the census data of the pie chart of household incomes right now in Ogden. And then we compared these household incomes to what someone could afford if your household makes that income. And we're kind of surprised to find that a big chunk of that pie really can only afford a multiple-family dwelling. If your household makes less than $75,000, which is a pretty good income, in today's market with the rents, you're really going to be able to afford an apartment in a, like a, like, could be built on the particular Grandview property, a multi-story, multiple-family project. If you're in the 75 to 100,000, that's where sort of a duplex townhome. And there's a smaller slice that can actually afford a single-family dwelling. So that's really where the needs are. And if we continue with this, continue on, that's kind of the future of Ogden. The challenge is, we've done a good job of providing areas for multiple family. We've done a lot of planning in downtown and really encouraged redevelopment and new housing projects. In commercial areas, we allow multiple family, and you can see a lot of multiple-family construction. So we're doing a good job of hitting housing for that two-thirds of Ogden. There is some land for that sort of middle housing, the duplex townhome sort of thing. What we're really missing is that upper end. There's very few options in Ogden for people to buy other than existing homes. We just aren't a community that has 200 acres of farmland that we can annex and then, you know, subdivide into a bunch of single-family lots. There are very few opportunities for new single-family housing in Ogden. Sort of our best source recently has been churches that have been torn down and, and developers buying them and having opportunities for redevelopment of those sites. And so if we continue with this trend, we're really going to force out that upper end. There's really not going to be as many options for business owners, for nurses, for schoolteachers to be able, who want to sink roots and, and buy a home in Ogden to be here. So this is why this recommendation came from you, the planning commission. Can we create zoning that would create opportunities for more single families? You can see just the permits we're issuing. We issue very few permits for single family. In the general plan, one of the goals that says is by permitting and encouraging higher densities, the city could accommodate more residential development on the same acreage if the community deemed that appropriate. So basically, if you have an area that's zoned for 6,000 square foot lots, you can get one house on every 6,000 square foot lot. If you allowed that to divide into two smaller lots, you could get twice as many houses. And so that idea is to be able to get more homes with more ownership opportunities on the finite lands resource we have now. opportunities on the finite lands resource we have now. So this is an example of what a small lot subdivision could look like. With, yes, you don't have a great, big, huge yard. You don't have a lot of acreage, but it is something that you could own, that if you were, again, a schoolteacher, business owner, that you could invest in Ogden and be able to lay roots in the community. And with careful design, can be done very well. Here's another one in Ogden that's just small lot, single-family houses. Or a duplex where you could own part of an attached unit, or townhomes where you can own part of a unit. So in order to make this happen, this is what we looked at. Maybe there should be a zoning that's somewhere between R3 and R2. So that's where we came up with the R2S, the single and two-family small lot zone, where you wouldn't be able to do the multifamily apartments there. But let's allow townhomes, if each owner can be owned separately, so require them to plat each unit, and set up the utilities and everything so that you could actually own it. Duplexes would continually allow, and these small lots, if you want to divide it into small lots and create single-family, that this zone would allow that.
Chair, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
About that slide, Barton. As far as the single-family goes, 2,500 square foot minimum, is there any associated setbacks with requirements? What are those? I didn't see it listed.
Yes, so it is in the zone. We would recommend setbacks of three feet on each side, which would allow, like the project showed, to have smaller side yards. I think we said 10 feet or 20 feet on the front? Let me look.
And while you're looking it up, those small lots look like they have a hard time having legal parking behind, since there's no way to get to the behind. How does that all work?
Yeah, so the proposal would still require two parking spots. So the project that you saw, these all have alley.
Oh, I see.
So it's two parking spaces in the alley. If you do them out front, then it's a project like that. One thing we did do is say that they could be a tandem garage. So like, here's a two-car garage, but it's just tough on that side. So you could do a deeper garage, or you could do a single-car garage with the car space next to it, or something in back. The alley loaded works really well, but there are options for the front, too.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Let's see, and we said, minimum, front yard 10 feet, side 3 feet, and rear of 10 feet. So there are small setbacks in order to be able to get, you know, that sort of development. And you really, we've talked to one developer already about this concept, and you really got to design the home to fit the lot. You can't just plat them and hope something happens there. You really think about access and parking and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think that... Oops, I went the wrong way. Oops, I went all the way. Sorry. So, yes, planning commission was really very excited about this option. They are recommending that you adopt it, and I'd say recommending it with some enthusiasm that you adopt it, so.
Appreciate that. Any other questions or discussion with Barton before we take input?
No, I just have a comment. You had made a comment earlier of a question I asked about, is this a possibility of a tool in our toolbox for the entire city? And I appreciated your answer of, yes, it is potentially something that we can do across the city, so.
Yes, we do get requests for zoning. I know the council's had some requests to go to R3, and this might be an option for, in a neighborhood where you want to keep density that low, but still allow this sort of housing.
Awesome. Well, thanks so much, Barton.
You're welcome.
Right now, we'd be happy to take public input on this item, and this item alone, just about the R2S, two-family zoning. Step up, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Teresa Brownwell. Good evening. I like this. It sounds like a really good idea. Because when I looked at the slide that said what the demographic of Ogden City is, I was taken aback. And the first idea that came to my mind was, which came first, the chicken or the egg? I know, I grew up in Ogden. I went to school in Ogden City School District, and I know that was not the demographic of Ogden when I grew up in Ogden and was in the Ogden City School District. So that has happened. That demographic has come about, I'd say, within the last 20 years, but more significantly within the last 10. So how do you change it? Is it the chicken or the egg that comes first? Do you create the housing for the people that you want, or do you create the housing for the people that made their way here in the last 10 years, for reasons unknown? I love the idea of people that earn somewhere around $50,000 a year being able to afford something that they can own, that they can be creating equity, rather than just paying rent and losing all of that money that they're paying for their whole lifetime to a landlord. So if this is one of the solutions that can help that problem, I think being proactive and building the housing for the people that you want will help. And I know Ogden, I mean, I'm just going to be honest, Ogden has gone way downhill in the last 20 years, especially in the last 10. And I think it can turn around. I think it can become a productive place again. I think you can have people that work, rather than people that are on public assistance. And I think that requires having housing that those people can buy. So I like this idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to just say, if you're online, you can raise your hand. In the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Come on up, yeah, if you have anything to say in this room. Welcome.
Love the shirt, Zane.
I want to go wherever that is. Please state your name for the record.
So, Zane Wolstenheim, I'm here. I was Business Administrator for Ogden School District.
And Mayor of Oakley.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyway, I'm just here to say that the school board is supportive of this proposal, and I'd like to commend the planning commission for the idea, and recommend that you guys support this change. I would encourage you to do that as soon as possible. And I would also like to take issue with something the previous speaker just said. I think Ogden is in better shape today than it's ever been. And I think there's a lot of good things going on in Ogden right now, and you have a lot to do with that. So, anyway, my two bits.
Thank you so much. Any other comments here in the audience? Come on up. And Eric, I can't see if there's anybody online. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Tuber, and I live in Ogden. I think this is great. Like I said, I love Ogden, and I love what the potential is here. But the thing that concerns me with what I see is, I came from the east, and Washington DC, and Napolis, everything is getting all clogged up. And I sort of see us going in that same direction. I don't know how many people here live in Ogden and travel our roads every single day. I do. And if you go out there on Harrison, the traffic is tremendous. I can't believe how it's changed over the last year. And it goes all the way down to like, South Ogden, and it's bumper to bumper. It's not like a smooth transition the way that possibly it could be. I just want to make sure that y'all realize what you're really doing. Yeah, you're giving Ogden money. You're giving us more housing. And I think it's great that it's going to be for the average person that can afford, the worker bee, basically. But do we have to destroy everything that's green? I look at the Dapp Park, I go by it every day, and there's always kids out there, there's kids with dogs, people playing and having a good time. And we've got the nice, gentle housing that's there in the area, and I guess it's World War II building. So if we go in there and start throwing up townhouses and, you know, huge areas, it's going to destroy that area. And, you know, I mean, like, is that what you really want to do? If you look around, where else are there green spaces in Ogden that are now going to be available to the kids to be able to play? We're taking away a really great park that, you know, it's being surrounded by all these new apartments and houses and that type of thing. But it also is taking away something that, once you take it away, you take that green space away, it's not going to be replaced. So where else are they going to go? So I think you ought to look at protecting some of the area that's green, and protecting, and moving some of these middle-income-type houses somewhere else where there's plenty of space, because we have plenty of other space that can be done, instead of using that particular area. Why don't we use it for conservation area? Put up a center for teaching kids about the environment, or whatever, you know, whatever would be good. But, and that would be a better resource, and a better way to use that particular type of property. So I just want to put my two cents with it. I moved here from the east to get away from all of that, and you're bringing everything, I guess I tried to get away from, back here.
Thank you.
And the thing that...
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, I got one of the things to... The thing that you take from the sidewalk directly into a house, to me, that's dangerous when you're talking about crime and that type of thing.
Thank you, thank you so much. Anyone else in the audience? Great, we can go online. I don't know who it is. I don't have a name or anything, so.
No, random caller.
Do you want to take him off mute, and I can tell him? Okay, Heath, I think you're...
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, it's me. Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Sadly, since this has been a major issue for Angel for years now, she's too ill to even listen in tonight, and she has me to thank for bringing that thread back from my recent trip to the stall sculpture in North Carolina. So that's on me. I haven't followed this as closely as she has, but from my understanding of what she's been pushing for over the last four or five years now, it's precisely the sort of zoning changes needed to allow a growth in soft density to meet our growing housing needs, particularly in that missing middle. I don't know if this is the right space for this or not, as, again, I haven't followed this super closely. But we definitely need more ways to create ownership opportunities in the city, and this is the sort of ways we might start addressing that. So I want to thank the planning commission and for you guys for looking at this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else there? Oh, Angel is on? Is she unmuted? I feel like I'm working in the dark over here. No? Kind of want to push the Zoom button, but... Angel, are you there?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening. Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I wish I could be there, but I am obviously not very well right now, and so I'm very appreciative that you can still listen along online. I'm very pleased with how Barton has been pushing for moving us forward as far as updating our zoning so that it is more inclusive and creates pathways to ownership. And so while I 100% support this zone change, I'm asking you as a council to go yes and, and to go beyond 6,000 square feet for a lot, for a single-family home. There are many cities across the United States that are, pardon me, allowing pathways to home ownership by changing zoning so that there are smaller lots. Multifamily housing is not the answer to everything. It does need to be a mixture. And I would encourage you to perhaps put together a work group as a council, and to start looking at what other states are doing, and how it's working to change the lot size. It helps us with regards to our infrastructure, and the fastest way out of intergenerational property, poverty, sorry. The fastest way out of IGP is to create a pathway to home ownership. So I fully support this, and I ask you to push a little further, and continue to work with Barton, who is bringing ideas from other states that are working as we update our code. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Eric? Okay, great. Let's see. All right, any other questions or discussion before we consider a motion?
Chair, I think that this is a really good balance between that huge gap between R2 and R3. And so I got to salute Barton and the planning commission for coming up with this. This is going to give us a lot more, a really important tool, so that everything isn't a four-story apartment building that's coming in. I'm really happy for this. I think we need to be really proactive in looking at where this is appropriate around our city, and doing some proactive rezoning. But this is what we got today, and I appreciate it. And I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready to accept it.
Real fast, I think all of us would like to answer about the green space issue, and maybe Barton could talk just a little bit about what property we're actually talking about, and the park next to it, the green space that...
Well, I appreciate that, but that's actually the next item. This is just to create the zoning.
Okay, I was just, because someone asked about it.
Yeah.
So, okay.
He's going to talk about it in the next one.
Sounds good.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2023-41.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hayer, and a second from Councilmember Nadolski to adopt ordinance 2023-41. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Traburka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you so much. I mean, I was just going to respond to that person, too. We're all required to live in Ogden. Just wanted to clarify that, because we represent Ogden, so we all live in Ogden, everybody that's up here. Maybe not on that end, but over here. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, this item is a proposed rezone of property at 3841 Jackson Avenue from, and you have the choice of either R2 or your new-created R2S. Now, that's an option. So the property's at 3841... So the properties at 3841 Jackson Avenue, it's owned by the Ogden School District. And they're in the process of, as I mentioned, declaring it surplus and offering it for sale. It's about five and point one five acres. Here's a closer look at the property itself. And the R3 zone, the current one would allow multiple family up to about 20 units per acre. This is the site. Um, the left is a leftover parking lot from the former Grandview Elementary site. And the rest is just open. And noted that there is quite a slope from Jackson Avenue down to the property. It's also adjacent to a public park. So the park is a City of Ogden Park, and it will remain. And it's just the school district's elementary, former elementary site that is owned by them. And so they control it and they are, have considered it and are declaring that property surplus. So I know this issue came before the council and you fought hard about uh whether the city should purchase it. Uh, went back and forth, but ultimately your action led to not purchasing it. And uh so that's why the school district will now be offering it for sale.
May I clarify your point there? It's actually administration's action. We don't have the power to purchase property.
Yes, thank you. So looking at the surrounding uses, it's really a, a mix of uses in this area. As I noted, to the north is a park. On the east side of Jackson Avenue, there's a, a church and an office building and uh more offices. And most of it's surrounded by Grandview Acres, which is a multiple family use. It was a, so here's the office building across the street. This is Grandview. And Grandview was a former military barracks that's been since converted to multiple family. So they're uh mostly two-story buildings. And looking at what the general plan says about the site, it says to supporting mixed-use zone redevelopment project for the old Grandview Elementary site and surrounding multiple family developments. And some of the general plan policies are looking at doing neighborhood centers, which would be right next to the site. This a big red circle would be a neighborhood center. And a policy of having the ability to conveniently walk to destinations as opposed to driving will enhance the quality of life in Ogden. This particular site, just taking uh Google Maps and you can find your walking distance. And I just plugged into the site and went to Weber State and gives you 11 minutes. Probably if you're a student, you could probably walk faster, depending on what time your class starts, you could probably even get there faster. But it's very close to Weber State. It's very close to the BRT line, which will run along uh Harrison. So if you wanted to go there and hop on the BRT, then you can get anywhere in Ogden. Also, you're close to McCady Hospital. So again, it shows 17 minutes to walk to McCady. And again, depending on where your shift starts, you might be able to get there quicker. Um, even if you had to drive, it's a very short drive. So just analysis of this, this is a very good site for where someone would want to live. If you could uh buy a house there or buy a condominium or, or a townhome there, this would be a very attractive place to live. And again, we looked at uh just what the R3 would allow, which would most likely be apartments. Uh, looking at the R2S would really focus on ownership housing, whether it be small lot, single family or duplexes or, or townhomes. But again, focusing on ownership options. So the planning commission felt that this was a very good site for this new R2S that they uh were proposing. I'll note on another thing on the uh open space issue. The R2S zoning does not require onsite open space of on it. And the reason was there's a park right next door. So that's why the zoning was created without that. So we felt this was a really good opportunity to use the park and uh as open space for new neighborhood residents. So uh again, the planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning to R2S.
Thanks so much, Barton. Any other questions or comments for him? Great, we'd be happy to take public input on this item. You can step up to the podium and state your name for the record. Or if you're online, you can raise your hand in the Zoom meeting.
I have to clarify this.
Oh, come on up to the podium. And it looks like we do have, oh, so I'm so sorry, we can't hear you if you're not at the mic.
See, now I can't hear y'all back there, so. I just want to let y'all know that what I was really trying to say is that not y'all in particular that don't live in Ogden, but the people that are planning this and that have put these plans together prior to y'all ever seeing them, don't necessarily live in Ogden. That's what I was trying to say.
Oh, no problem. And do you mind saying your name for the record?
Oh, Adrian Zubler.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Looks like we do have one person calling in on the phone, I think, that Google Pixel. So I think it's um star six. You hit that if you'd like to raise your hand. Oh, star nine, I apologize. I keep saying the wrong one, star nine, if you'd like to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Looks like we do have one constituent raising their hand online, Angel Castillo. And a little bit of wild screen action happening too. Um, go ahead, Angel.
Thank you. Angel Castillo, Ogden residence. Um, again, I'd like to uh praise and support Barton and the planning commission for um waiving green space as there is a park that people can use. Um, I firmly believe that we have to continue to uh be creative, to create pathways to homeownership. And so I support this particular rezone and thanks to planning commission and Barton again for thinking outside of the box and being creative with coming up with solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up. Can tell you're coming from the school district because you raised your hand, but just very polite.
Zane Wollston, you Ogden School District Business Administrator. Thanks for moving so quickly.
Yeah, I mean, that was pretty fast.
Yeah, that's pretty quick. Uh, s- s- so the school board is really supportive of this kind of development. We know that multifamily housing apartments don't bring students. And we've been in a declining enrollment situation for all of the years that I've been here, almost 10 years now. Um, and so we're excited for the prospect that this might bring some more kids to the school district. And I have developers knocking at the door, uh anxious for me to put this on the market. So anyway, thank you. It's another uh proof of a good collaborative relationship that we have with the school board, with the city council and the city planning department. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Chair, Zane, I, I want to thank, well, I want you to thank the school board members and the administration, the rest of the administration. You've been a real good partner on this thing and we appreciate you. So thank you for
I'll be sure to do that, too.
You bet.
Thank you. Our, our interests are certainly aligned, not, not necessarily our style and shirts, but
I mean, I like that.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just jealous, Zane.
I mean, it is wild, man.
Bet I figured you're the odd man out on that one.
I'm totally the odd man out, man.
Looks like we have one more comment online, Stephen Van Wagner. Go ahead. Hello?
Hi, Chair, can you hear me okay?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, Stephen Van Wagner, citizen Ogden, Utah. As you all know, um, I came before you back in 2022, um, fighting on behalf of the children of Ogden, fighting on behalf of the health of Ogden, fighting on behalf of the mental health of our youth, the connectivity of our community, the possibilities of the, of, of, of a property attached to an existing park space to make it a sound 10-acre park that could service not only the kids of Ogden, but the surrounding areas. We have an increasing demand on our space. We are not following our own plans within the community at allocating the 20 acres of additional space by 2023 that this council approved in 2019. It is paramount to the health of our community, the cost of our healthcare, the, the, the opportunities that, that come from open spaces in our community and preserving spaces that we have. And Grandview was one of those. I'm happy that our council, our school district, our, our planning has worked together to reduce the uh, uh, well, you're getting ready to take action and looking at, taking a rezone on this property that was zoned with an unlimited height capacity. And we realized that during work sessions as that came out uh during one of Barton's presentations. So I'm thankful for everybody working together to try to limit the amount of, of density, give more homeownership opportunities and all the things that you're working on um so hard to do. I am still concerned, however, about the health of our, of our country, the health of our community and the health of our kids. The World Health Organization just, just published another study. And it shows that, that one, but that local costs of healthcare are being reduced by 1.9 billion dollars a year. And 40% of that is attributed to, to just the mental health. And the prevention from parks is mentioned as part of this study. I urge you to please do everything you can as a council, administration, school district and, and anyone else listening, a community at large, to work together to find the space to meet our, our plan of 20 more acres by 2023, which we all uh agreed to back in 2019. Help our kids, help our, help, help our mental health and help us uh do better by future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Great, um, I'd be happy to consider a motion unless um anyone has their discussion.
I'd like to make a comment before we take a, a vote or a motion. So I just want to clarify that, I guess the consideration tonight is not whether we're choosing green space over homes. We're discussing R3, R2 or R2S. The comment I'll make kind of applied to our previous discussion, but um I'll first say that around this piece of property, there's been a lot of discomfort. It's just been a challenging uh piece of space. But often through discomfort comes growth. And I think that this R2S zone is an outgrowth uh for good from that discomfort. So I just think that R2S fits really well here um over the R3 and the R2 option. Because this is the scale of product that people need right now. The first-time home buyers 10, 20 years ago, we're looking for something different. But first-time home buyers today need something a lot more akin to the R2S. Just to build that generational wealth, to break that generational cycle of poverty um and to overcome a lot of uh financial disparities.
Chair, I would like to make that motion uh that we um adopt ordinance 2023 dash 42 by rezoning the property at 3841 Jackson Avenue to the newly uh created zone R2S.
Second.
The motion from Councilmember Hayer and a second from Councilmember Nadolski to um adopt ordinance 2023 dash 42 with the R2S residential zone included. Um, is there any other discussion on that item? Okay, so roll call vote.
Councilmember Hayer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Nadolski.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie.
Aye.
Chair Truburka.
Aye, and that passes.
Chair, before we go, and I just want to quickly make a comment. And, and I, I, I was able to show you all a um tool that I use or we've been able to use um at Wasatch Front Regional Councilance, the Access to Opportunity um calculator. And I appreciated that Barton showed how much just walking and uh there was a school around there. And, and one of the things that really great about that space is it's not just the healthcare, it's not just the bus, it's not just childcare. It's, there's a grocery store that's close, there's um uh the ability to get on transit, there's ability to access jobs. And so this is an ideal piece of property for just what we're doing. And I'm just, I'm glad that you recognize that and um uh that we move forward on this piece of property. And we are still keeping a park that is still there, although not 10 acres, it's still five acres. But um at least there's some even green space there. So thanks, Barton, for doing all that work that you did.
Agreed. Any other comments?
I, I, I think it might be, you know, for the public's benefit, the uh, there was a lot of passion. I mean, as, as we all know, and if you've been following this for any length of time, there was a lot of passion on uh many people's part that this should be open space. The, because of its location, to all of the things that uh Councilmember White just mentioned, its appraised value was very high. Higher than you could really fig, you could make a pencil for, for open space. And so the only thing that we were left to be able to do would be to rezone it to O1, which would be a legal taking. And I don't know what that would have cost us, but it certainly cost us something. Um, there was a good compromise at that time that uh we took the Forest Street Park area, the, the school that was down there and planned a really nice sports uh development down there uh that will benefit our, our city. I mean, many acres, I don't know how many acres it is total, but uh with some potential for growth. So I, I think the, the compromise was good. There are still opportunities forthcoming that, you know, the school district isn't, hasn't finished disposing of property. Uh, we don't know what, what all is yet, but we are uh working closely with them as that, as that becomes available. And, and there may be opportunities in the future. So all is not lost. We can still meet our goals and uh, but it, it's important that we keep cool heads and, and plan proactively in the future. So, and I think all of that is in, is in place and is happening.
I had his comments, Chair.
I agree with and support everything you just said. I uh, I remember when we were going through that, people said, well, you guys are just about money. You could make an argument that going from R3 to R2S cost us a little bit of money in our bottom line, but we provided what people need. And that's the, that's the intent and that's worth a lot more than whatever cost there was in the bottom line. We've got to give our people an opportunity to, an opportunity to own so they can have an opportunity to thrive. So um, and I'm personally really excited about what we're going to do at Forest Street. That's a generational impact too for our kids.
Thank you. Any other comments down there? Okay, great. Well, up next, we're inviting our mayor, Mike Caldwell, um, to speak with us about the appointment of the chief administrative officer. Just want to say while he's walking down, um, our process is that um we will accept input about this um appointment this evening. And then we'll consider tabling to July 18th to make our final decision. Just so in our process, we have an opportunity to get feedback from the public and then take that under consideration and then provide our advice and consent. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And it's a great honor for me to present Mayor Brown for our appointment of chief administrative officer. And in your packet, I'm going to read through your packet. This is not my narrative. This is what has been presented and everything else. Um, mayoral authority to appoint a chief administrative officer, the state code is per Utah code S103B202. And it said, "The mayor in a municipality operating under the council, mayor form of government shall appoint with the council's advice and consent," which is why we're here tonight, "a qualified per- tonight, "a qualified person for each of the following positions." And the number one on that state code is the chief administrative officer. Each person appointed as chief administrative officer shall be appointed on the basis of the person's ability and prior experience in the field of public administration and any other qualifications prescribed by ordinance. The mayor may not appoint a chief administrative officer during an interim vacancy period. So what we want is to provide this recommendation for a full-time chief administrative officer. And I can tell you without exception, being in the sausage making and everything else, it's critical for our employees and for everybody else that we have a full-time, fully empowered chief administrative officer. The responsibilities include supervising the administration and enforcement of all laws and ordinance of the city, executing the policies affecting city departments. Mara's been with the city for 16 and change. She knows all of that. She's a municipal attorney. We could not find a better person. Part of the questions that have come to me and have come to me from you is what was the selection process like? I want to give you a quick overview of that. We went online and had 23 job boards. It was advertised through 29 external agencies such as the Department of Workforce Services, Utah League of Cities and Towns, Weary State University, Utah Division of Multicultural Affairs, U.S. Office of Veterans Affairs and others. The deadline for submitting all those applications was May 9th, 2023. We received 46 applications. And we had a really interesting interview panel that went through that. That included Matt Dixon, the South Ogden City Manager, Alex Jensen, the Leighton City Manager, Nicole Cottle, the West Valley Assistant City Manager, Mike Matthew, our Fire Chief, and Jay Lauter, our Public Services Director. Out of all of those, I think the scores are in your packets. Mara came out on top in terms of overall experience and time with the city. I think this is a really important thing to call out, that we had statewide support as we went through the process and interviewed those 46 different candidates. And she came out on top with really high scores. She knows coming into this that if a new mayor gets elected, she can be, like we've seen in other parts of the state, all the department directors are at the will of the mayor and they can be moved on and pushed out if necessary. But I view this as an investment in our employees. When you look at what she's done with human resources and IT and all the critical backend infrastructure for all of our employees, this is a really, really good way to provide stability and consistency for our employees. And I'm very proud to put her up there. There's, I know there are questions about severance and everything else that comes with any department director that is nominated and considered, but I think anybody would be crazy to not have that institutional knowledge that she would bring to this position. And that's what I want to provide to you all. It's what I want to provide to our employees. The budgeting and everything else that we're celebrating in terms of Marsha White and some of the other bonding and other things that have come up, that is in large part by the leadership that she has provided in this. And she won't, I'm sure she's more uncomfortable now than she is typically in any meeting anywhere when people are singing her praises. But it is my honor to present to you for advice and consent and for public comment, Mara Brown, who's done a phenomenal job for our city and for our employees for your consideration. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have the packet, I'm reading from your packet, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you'll have about my recommendation for this position and why I feel like it is
I guess a comment, I was, I guess elephant in the room, some of us are campaigning right now, but I was asked a question by the media recently after our first debate and they said, "What are some of the things that the current administration's done well?" And there's a lot of things. People tend to focus on our disagreements, but one thing I disagree with is that, a comment made earlier, I do think Ogden's better than it was 10 years ago. And the comment I shared to the media at the time was, "This administration has done a really good job of creating leaders throughout every rank." Leadership occurs at every level, right? And I think Mara is a perfect example of that. Throughout my campaigning, I hear stories about those other cities, we won't name names, but the, I mean, I think just from memory, it's probably 10 plus years for, for the big humdinger we're both thinking about. And I still hear stories and examples about how that has contributed to the instability of that city today and in some of the departments that are still struggling from that decision. So I support your desire for stability. I also support your desire to hang on to all of the talent and the character and integrity that we have throughout our ranks.
And I didn't say this earlier because we always want to hire on terms of merit and who is the most skilled and qualified to do that. She will be the first female CAO of Ogden City. And she has earned that and I'm extremely proud of the work that she's done. And I think that's worth mentioning, that we've tried to break down those barriers and bring people in, that it doesn't matter where you're from, what your background is or anything else, it matters what you do when you come in the door every day and how you take care of your people. And she's been exemplary at that.
I have a comment for Mara. Mara, I just wanted to say that I, even though we never necessarily have worked close together in any projects, but I know of your reputation and of the great person and great human being that you are and your credentials. So I just want to say congratulations for this appointment. Thank you.
I would just piggyback on what Councilman Nadolski said. I, I admit, or I agree, I think, I think, Mayor, you get beat up a lot for things and what people fail to realize is, is the great team that you've put together. And I think you have done a phenomenal job of bringing people and putting people in position in Ogden City to not only be successful, but to flourish and to make big impacts. And you've done that numerous times. We've got a phenomenal staff. We have phenomenal employees. And, and, and we, you, you and your team have instilled in those employees a love for this city and that, that speaks volumes also. And I, I would just be remiss if I didn't just make some comments about Mara. During the interview process, we were able to talk to Mara and learn from Mara. And I was super impressed, not only with Mara's skills, she's extremely qualified, she's extremely talented, but her love, not only for our city, but for the city employees also, is, was overwhelming. And I appreciate her, number one, acquiring those skills and obtaining those skills here in Ogden City, but then having, having the desire to stay here and to use those skills and to use those, those experiences to continue to benefit our city. And so I applaud you for that and I applaud you, Mayor, for the team you've assembled.
I would add, it's not about a me, it's about a we. And she has been a leader and it's a we kind of approach to what we're doing. So thank you for that.
Yeah, so I just want to say, just hanging out in Salt Lake and some of the people that I hang out with down in Salt Lake, when I mentioned that you brought Mara forward as the person for the CAO job, they were just ecstatic. So not only is she creating a reputation in Ogden, but she's creating a reputation at the state level. And so I just thank you for doing that and being the person that you are for that too. So, thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to just thank you again also for the process that you followed to, to get to this point. I think any, any of the director positions or any, any position in the city like this, regardless of who the new mayor would be, would, we would want to have a very similar process followed and, you know, have 46 candidates. I'm sure there were some good ones in there for sure. But it also, I think underscores or highlights what a gem we have with Mara and, and the institutional knowledge, her understanding of all the things going on with Ogden, a lot of value to that. And so just wanted to thank you on that respect and yeah.
Well, I want to thank her. We had Burger King chefs and a number of others that thought they were qualified to be the CAO, but nobody scored higher than Mara.
Chair, I, yeah, I would like to say a little something. I, you know, as, as someone who was born here in Ogden and has lived here all my life, very invested in the city, I have also, you know, been involved in, in city government for, I don't know, 16 plus 12, so whatever that is. I was never going to get at math, but.
That's 28.
Everybody else is better at math.
Is that a Ben Lomond grad?
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I, and also having been involved in some leadership training in other areas, one of the things that is very important is, you know, if you can keep your team together, you don't, you know, we're going to lose U.S. Mayor, which has, we're going to have some rebuilding to do. We're going to have some council members that are going to be changed. And so there will be some rebuilding to do, but, but to keep as much stability as we can, we were fortunate to have Mara already here. We didn't have to bring her in, so we didn't, so she's already going to be part of that stabilizing factor. I, my time working with her has been, has always been stellar. She's, you know, she, she doesn't, she's not really an emotional person. She thinks with her head and, and she's very centered in what she says. I, I've always really appreciated the wisdom that she displays, but her demeanor is, is calming and unsettling and I, and I appreciate that about her. I think we're very fortunate. I think those pieces that came together have been a real blessing to Ogden. I hope that even after January, I hope we keep her for a good long time, so.
I, I can tell you without exception that this is the exact same timeline when I was given a new CAO. And the institutional knowledge he brought to the table, certainly on my first day, which was completely overwhelming, but having somebody in that position that had been through it, knew the players, knew what was going on, knew where the buttons and levers were and how to make things work, was invaluable to me. And that's why I have no reservations whatsoever with putting Mara up for your advice and consent. I think she would be amazing for all the employees, amazing for the city. We've talked, you know, for almost 12 years now about the budgeting and the importance of managing all of that. She's been stellar at that, being a municipal legal attorney, everything else. She knows how all of this works. Putting somebody fresh that doesn't know any of the background and what we've worked through and what we've been through and how hard we fought to get where we are, I think would be a huge detriment to the community. So I'll, I'll just say on my personal level, I didn't always agree with the CAO I was given, but we found a way to work together and I found her to be very flexible and willing to work and listen and figure out how to get things done that we need to accomplish. So that's just a personal anecdote from my end, because I didn't know Mark from Noah at all, but we figured out where our priorities were and where we needed to go. And I think she's the person that can do that with whoever comes in as the next mayor and would give a lot of stability and consistency to the community. And I think that's invaluable.
Great, well, I guess it's my turn. If that's okay. Do you have something else you want to say?
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say thank you so much, Mayor, for following the process that we asked you all to do, you know, on several different appointments we've had since I've been here. And certainly I was definitely a person that said, maybe it's not the right time, you know, to have this activity happen, but we can't control when people retire and then when new people are appointed. So this is what we have to do in the time that we have now. And for, as far as Mara goes, I feel a little biased because we've worked together on several projects and I feel that we've become friends and I trust her judgment. And I'm really, really happy and congratulate you for this appointment as well. Okay, so, oh, did you have?
I did have one more thing to add, because the mayor reminded me, one thing I didn't realize until we went, started this process is that you were given this exact same timeline? Because certainly we ask questions about the timeline too. We have a lot of hard things that come to us and rarely are they on the right timeline or at perfect timing. But as I've reflected on it, I guess if you were in this seat when you were running six or many years ago, 12 years ago.
As Ted Wilson said, they go by in dog years. So that, I did the math, that's 82 years ago. My gray hair reflects.
That's 28 backwards for Rich. But, you know, you probably would have asked the same questions about timing too. And, but as I've reflected on it, I guess the timing is one thing, but the, the meat of the decision today is we're in an advice and consent process. We're here to evaluate character and competence. And if you distill it to that, Mara, you, I can't think of or have ever experienced a single bad thing about your character or your competence. I've never heard a single bad thing from anybody about either of those things. I know that we're going to accept public comment and I predict we won't hear a single bad thing about it from anybody. So from that perspective, this is a very easy decision.
She does have the yappy dog at home, I'll give that.
So, but, but Mara deserves that focus on this and not a focus on politics. Let's put the focus on the person, which is what this process is intended to do. And I thank you for putting this person forward because I look forward to getting to know you better. One of the challenges we've had in this culture is that we don't know each other well, particularly at the director level. We interact primarily with the CAO and the mayor. And so in these coming months, I do look forward to interacting with you more in the interactions that I've had in terms of character and competence. There's zero fault or zero issue whatsoever, only, only highlights, so thanks.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks so much, Mayor. So now we'll take some time to take public input on this item. And you can step to the podium and you'd state your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak. And if you're online, you would raise your hand if you're in the Zoom meeting, if you'd like to make comment. Come on up. Zane has started the tradition of people raising their hand. You don't have to raise your hand, you can just step right up.
Can we wear shirts like that?
I'm a professor, so I insist that the students raise their hand. My name is Robert Hunter. My address is 5103 Sunset Ridge in Shadow Valley. I put on a tie tonight so that, you know, you'd respect my words more. And so here I am. And it sounds like what I'm going to say is going to be redundant, but I had no idea how you all felt. I wanted, I feel strongly about Mara and I wanted to come and express that feeling. As you know, I'm, or as most of you know, I'm the former chief elected official of Weber County and the former chief executive officer of Ogden City. And I don't say that to self-aggrandize, maybe a little bit, but I say it because it has put me in a position to understand what this job takes. And I've worked with Mara off and on for the 15 years that she's been with the city, in the city attorney's office as well as in the administrative office. And so I just wanted to say, I don't know of a quality that I would want to have in a chief administrative officer that she doesn't have. She's pretty amazing. She's personable, easy to work with and a really strong leader. And so she has my 100% support. I'm also here tonight to represent the entire leadership of my hometown Ogden. Steve Peterson asked me if I would represent the leaders of my hometown Ogden because in their weekly meetings here at Ogden City, to discuss hundreds and hundreds of projects that volunteers have been carrying out across the city, they've been really, really impressed with her participation, her support, her knowledge and the things that she's able to lend to the project. So that's what I have to say and I'm doing it as a politician in less than three minutes.
Good example, good example. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Come on up.
Zane, I'm wearing your shirt next time. Should have taken a book. My name is Dinette Pully. I'm here as an Ogden community member, local business and nonprofit leader and fan of Mara Brown. I've had an opportunity and fan of Mara Brown. Um, I've had an opportunity to, first off, I wanted to say how much I respect each of you. Um, over the last, I think I've lived here almost eighteen years now. I've had, uh, unique opportunities to work with you personally, professionally in our community. And, um, you take a lot of fiery darts and I really appreciate the dedication and time you're willing to give to our city and for the betterment of our community and our citizens. Um, and with that, I'm excited. I am excited about the next chapter with incredible gratitude and appreciation for where we've been. And I'm really excited about this appointment for Mara Brown as our chief administrative officer. I've had the opportunity to collaborate with Mara on a number of community business and nonprofit initiatives in my time that I've lived here in Ogden. Mara has a really unique ability to lead through complex issues while keeping the city taxpayers and the opportunity at hand balanced. It's really next level. And time and time again, Mara has led towards a collaborative solution that meets the demands of all parties using her knowledge of municipal law, governance and leadership. Every time Mara can carve through complexity with clarity for the greater good and governance of our people. Mara's qualifications speak for themselves, very much preaching to the choir, um, being redundant at that point. But I, I think we all can speak to Mara's proven track record and that kind of leadership is what we need now and next for Ogden City. Specifically, I want to just talk a little bit about, um, over the, the over six hundred and sixty Ogden City employees that are facing a tremendous change in the next six months. And the kind of stability and consistency that allows for productivity and continued growth and delivering of services and excellence for our, and on behalf of our community. It will very much depend on trust and leadership in the process and knowledge of what it takes to get that done. So with, uh, your leadership, with your, um, consent and consideration, I would like to add my voice of support for Mara Brown in this appointment for chief administrative officer, as well as my deep admiration and respect for all of you and what you do to serve our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, but we can go online with Amy Wicks.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Uh, Amy Wicks, Ogden resident. Um, I've tried to think how long I've known Mara. I think I'd been on the city council for about three years when she joined the city attorney's office. Um, and, and prior to that, I, I worked with her on some things with the nature center. Like she's, Mara's just, she has integrity. She's competent. She's engaged in the community. She listens to people. Um, I think she takes people's concerns to heart. Um, and, you know, I don't necessarily agree with the process, although I was around when we had John Patterson leave and Mark Johnson was appointed C A O. And I understand the importance of the role. Um, it, it's really important, you know? I, I think, um, they do a lot of the heavy lifting if you, um, I, I guess, Mayor Godfrey was kind of a bit of, I, I will say it, a micromanager. Um, but, um, if you don't have that, you know, your C A O needs to do a lot of the heavy lifting. And we needed somebody in that position, so Mark was appointed. You know, I, I have no problem with, with Mara and this appointment. I think she, she will do a fantastic job. I think she's probably the most qualified candidate we could possibly hope for, for this position. She knows Ogden. She's respected, um, the employees, seemed to get along well with her. I just can't think of anything bad to say about her. Like everyone who knows her respects her and, um, appreciates the opportunity to work with her. So, um, that's my two cents there.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Julie Johnson and I am a resident of Ogden City. I am here also to offer my support and voice for Mara Brown. I've observed Mara for many years and watched her in her role here at Ogden City and have always been so impressed with the work that she does and the, um, relationships that she's able to build. Most recently, and in full transparency to let you know, I am the C E O of United Way of Northern Utah. And Mara was appointed to our board last fall as a representative of Ogden City. And so I've had the opportunity to, uh, roll up my sleeves and work a little closer with her in, um, these last few months. And what I've observed has just been such a wonderful experience to see what an amazing person she is. The competencies and the values that she has will be such a great asset to Ogden City in her, in this role if she were to be appointed. Some of the things that I've, um, that I've observed, she's such a great relationship builder. She understands that people come before process and is able to cultivate, um, great relationships and is a great communicator that goes along with that. She's also a great collaborator. She's able to understand the roles of, um, and the diversity of the sectors in our community. And she's able to ascertain resources to be able to solve those, solve issues and come to common ground. And above all, I, um, highly respect Mara. She's such a great steward and an advocate for Ogden City. The love that she has for not only our community, but the members that live here is incredible and is, would be such a value to the, the role that she would be, um, serving in. And so just want to add that support for Mara. Thank you.
Thank you. I can see Mara getting more and more uncomfortable over there, but I did also just want to say, oh, there's one more hand. But I just wanted to say we have received many emails as well of support for Mara for people that weren't able to be here this evening or be online. Um, another hand online, we have Janie. Go ahead.
Hi, can y'all, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm probably going to embarrass Ben, but I was, um, I just wanted to, uh, call in. And Mara, I just wanted to congratulate you on this. Um, I know it's not official until it's official. But, um, just to share some thoughts with you all, Mara came to Boise, uh, during our basketball championship, Big Sky Basketball Championship. And she had the opportunity to come and, and listen to, uh, a really wonderful woman, um, speak about, uh, the anniversary of Title IX. And as I was watching this, um, meeting today, and I kept thinking about that and I just, I kept thinking about how great it is that, um, as a female, um, to be in this position now is such, such a big, um, accomplishment. And, uh, little girls are going to see that, Mara, and, um, they're going to be able to take after you. And again, congratulations on this. You do, you make us all proud. Thanks.
Would you mind saying your name for the record?
Oh, this is Janie Nadolski.
I mean, we know that, but not, not everybody. Thank you. And it looks like we have one more hand. Angel?
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. I echo some of the things that Janie Nadolski had said, um, when the announcement was made that we were going to be looking for a new C A O. I made a point of reaching out to Mara and asking her to apply because, uh, Dr. Susan Madsen, uh, research shows that women need to be asked to step up to positions of leadership because it's kind of a cultural thing that, uh, we're not used to seeing women in leadership positions. And I'm thrilled, uh, particularly because while I do not know Mara very well, I know people who know her very well, who have worked at the city and have nothing but great things to say about her and the fact that she is even tempered and constant and humble. Uh, she regularly would not take credit for things that she had done, as far as projects are concerned, and would turn around and credit it to her team. So I'm thrilled that we are going to be seeing a woman in a leadership position. And I feel that out of all of the employees that are within Ogden City, she is the best choice of anyone that we have. And I'm more thrilled, pardon me, that, um, she stood out above, head and shoulders above the other folks that had applied from outside resources. So, uh, thank you, and I highly encourage you to, um, approve this appointment.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, um, I'd be happy to consider a motion for this item.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we consider the, uh, appointment of Mara Brown and, um.
May I interrupt just for one second? We were thinking about tabling it.
And table it.
Yeah, we announced, oh, are you going to?
Yeah, I was going to finish that.
So sorry, I just wanted to.
And table this until July eighteenth?
Second.
So sorry about that.
I was getting there.
No problem. Um, so we have a motion from Councilmember White and a second by Councilmember Lopez to table this item till July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I, we really appreciate everyone for coming and speaking or writing to us on behalf of this appointment. We just want to table it so that others have the opportunity to also provide feedback as we announced they could, um, just because of the, the break in our schedule. So it's really our scheduling, um, error that's making this a little bit farther out. Um, but we'll be excited to see this on the agenda for next week. Okay, so now, um, we have time tonight. We've had a lot of comments. Um, for any public comment, um, on any topic, um, or concern that you might have, you can step to the podium and state your name for the record and you have three minutes to speak. And if you're online, you can raise your hand. Come on up.
Accessories. Hi, Teresa Bramwell. Good evening. I just wanted to tell the gentleman back here in the nice shirt that I really like Oakley. It's a safe place to live. It's a great place to live. And, uh, I also really like Huntsville. It's a safe place to live. And I was in Huntsville this past weekend and I had an experience that I wanted to tell you about. So I'll start with the K S L ad. Don't miss the humongous annual Huntsville Charity Yard Sale. Acres and acres of treasures for you to browse with friends and family. And one hundred percent of proceeds are donated to charity. The biggest yard sale anywhere, anytime. Check out the photos. Uh, free pancake breakfast with live music for all shoppers on Friday. Uh, generously provided by Rock House Financial. So I went to the yard sale because I like yard sales. And this was the sign on a big sign professionally made at the front of the yard sale. And it was acres and acres and acres. This was on a five acre property, beautiful farmhouse, very safe neighborhood, very safe farmhouse. History of the Huntsville Charity Yard Sale. Over twenty years ago, a local Huntsville family lost a daughter to cancer. In her honor, local community members started the Ogden Valley Charity Garage Sale to raise money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, which had blessed her before she died. The sale grew every year with some proceeds given to local families who had a child with a medical crisis. In two thousand nineteen, the organizers' name and address changed, but the mission remains the same. One hundred percent of proceeds from the Huntsville Charity Yard Sale are given to charitable causes. Uh, a large portion of the proceeds are now donated to the Seeger Memorial Clinic, a five oh one C three nonprofit free clinic in Ogden. Funds are also used to continue the mission of supporting local valley families in crisis. Thank you for your support. So I bought some stuff. I donated some money. I thought that was great, but I wanted to find out what this Seeger Memorial Clinic was because I'd never heard of it. So I looked it up and it is located on Twenty-Fourth Street, right below the library, in the building that is the Genealogy Library. I think I'll need to continue this another day because my time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next week, same time, same place. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we can go online with Angel.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident, um, I would just like to ask some follow-up questions with regards to the Ogden's participation in C R E P. Uh, the last time we had a meeting, I read you a letter from O two Utah, which had pledged to make sure that any of, um, any support the city would need, pardon me, with regards to, um, supplementing those of a lower income if they would be impacted by participation as well as connection to Weber State. I haven't heard any follow-up on that and I, I would like the council for, to state publicly where they are in the process. And then I would also like to, um, lift up the Lab House Rehabilitation Center. As the administration has given them a extension contract, which has many, many large hurdles, uh, as to whether or not they would be able to extend their lease while readying the property that they purchased. That is up in September, but I'm very concerned because the, uh, hurdles to allow that extension are many. I would like an update on that. And, um, just in, uh, general, I'd like to remind everyone, uh, to keep collars and tags on their dogs. This had a lot of loose animals freaking out from fireworks. And as we move into Pioneer Day, we're going to have another round of fireworks. So please encourage your animals, or please encourage your neighbors to keep collars and tags on their animals and secure their gates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilmember Hires' comments during the work session today regarding, um, concerns about fireworks and, uh, pets and also that's a D P S T. So I appreciate him bringing that up as an important, uh, topic. As you guys discuss, um, the things you need to do to meet state guidelines regarding, um, people experiencing homelessness, um, I, I hope you'll bring in, um, Anna Davidson, our official, uh, homeless services advocate to, to discuss, um, that sort of thing. Because we've learned in other places, other places, that just making homelessness, um, illegal does not solve the issue. It just sort of pushes it to the edges. Um, and we need to take more, more, um, thorough approaches than that. So, um, I hope we will consider a wider approach as we, um, move to meet, um, what the state's requiring of us. And that's about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, any comments from the administration?
You've heard plenty from me. I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members? The only thing I was going to bring up is, um, in the acknowledgements or somewhere, I think, um, I wanted to mention in the work session that we did talk about the new fire restrictions that have been put in place. So you'll see notices, um, blinking lights on Harris Boulevard that we are restricting fireworks above Harrison. And then, um, also in some areas along the river and then, um, over, over by Fort Bonamontura, et cetera. So that will be in place starting today. I think it is the fire restriction. So be sure to be careful with your fireworks over the holiday and yeah, keep track of your dogs.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
A motion from Vice Chair Ritchie, a second from Councilmember Lopez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Get ready to go into our next meeting. He's up.
Board Member Nadolski?
Aye.
Board Member White?
Aye.
Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Board Member Hire?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ritchie?
Aye.
Chair Trabrocca?
Aye, and that passes.
Aye. And that passes. We will be doing that and we will adjourn directly after that. There won't be any other agenda items. Thank you all for attending online.